Okay, we're gonna immediately go off script tonight because not on the agenda is a report from the Town-Village Visiting- Visioning Committee. They've been working for 12 months now trying to find ways for the village and the town to work together more efficiently or more holistically. And I think it's fair for me to say, since I'm on the committee, I think it's fair to say that it's a struggle. So Kevin Mathis and I have been a part of that committee. Tonight, we've got Loretta Ringney, Liz Barno, and the committee chair Ashley DePama with the first initiative that they have to bring before us. So with that introduction, I'm gonna have Ashley, if you wouldn't mind just going to the podium, and there is a microphone there, if you could hold it and speak into it because then we'll get on recording.
Hello, hello. So Loretta's handing you a proposal document. Just to give you a little background, earlier this summer, we met with the superintendents for DPW between the Town and the Village, and Jordan Tom came in, and we sort of facilitated a conversation about intermunicipal agreements, which led to some brainstorming and a proposal that came forward to pilot a leaf program. So at any point, please let me know if you have any questions, but this program is going to create efficiencies between the Town and the Village to exchange leaf pickup on certain streets. And we had a wonderful meeting last week with Mike and Andrew, and we talked through the measure of success for this project, and it being a pilot, and what we should do afterwards. So we're very excited to talk through this. It is budget neutral, no impact to overtime to the union. As you can see, the village will pick up the leaves on the Town of Glenville roadways listed on the top right with lane miles 5.83, and the Town of Glenville will pick up leaves in the village. And there was much communication about coordinating appearance to residents and ensuring that the same service is provided, and a lot of excitement between those who will be providing the service. So the committee unanimously supports this, and we wanted to bring it here for your question feedback and to consider implementation. So if you have specific questions about how this will work, I'm happy to answer those, or we can have Andrew come up. But let me know what questions you have, and I'll hand it over to the board.
Any questions? So one thing I would add is that this program would require some sort of intermunicipal agreement, so you guys would be asked to authorize an agreement between the two municipalities to make this change, but it's very similar to other things that we've done, so I don't think that would be any kind of stumbling block. A couple of things, if you don't mind, me adding. The leaf pickup was something that Andrew, I haven't talked to Tom or Mike, but Andrew was excited about because if, I don't see it happening, but if it were a failure, a failure is leaves and get picked up right, it's not terrible like something like plowing would be if the plowing thing had done right. But it's very similar to plowing, so it could open up some further cooperations in that area as well. So it works out pretty good. The other thing that I would bring up is that the committee has now expired, so their appointments were made last August, the reappointments would have to be made August or September. I know each of the village representatives are willing to continue at least until this initiative has seen its way through to see how it goes. So when we're done discussing the initiative itself, if there's any questions, I would probably move to extend the appointments till December 31st to be able to see this initiative through, see if it's a success, and then get some information back from our citizen volunteers to see if they want to continue with the committee.
How come you didn't continue all the way down below the avenue? So the Town is still gonna come through to pick up leaves from the other part of the avenue?
I have that same question, and the rationale really is the center street that goes down from there. Is that Pleasant View, Pleasantville? Help me out, Mike.
Division.
Division.
Division is the line for the Town and the Village. So we had looked at it and said to keep the mileage share in fair, we will just go down Division Street to Charles, and then from Charles up, we would swap with the village. And then we would make sure that the Town had a crew down there below that at the same time to service all of the residents at once.
So one of the things that had to be considered is you've got two unions involved, so you can't take work from one union and give it to another group of employees, so you know, it looks kind of weird because below the avenue is not included, but a lot more leaf pickup down below the avenue than there is in Grove Land, so.
Sure.
So one of the third next steps would be to coordinate that schedule between the Town and the Village to ensure that the residents below the avenue, when they see the leaf picked up by the village in the Town on Riverside and Charles, would have Mike's team and Tom's team there as well doing the rest to have that, you know, seamless appearance. And it's just another way to build on the coordination as well. But it is, what was considered by the superintendents was really the trees, the distance, how many leaves are on the streets, they really did due diligence and considered all of the variables. And so this summarizes really how they're gonna track success. I know they can track loads, and they can track timeline progress, and so we'll really be keeping an eye on that as the fall season begins.
That's one of the things I'll give the committee credit for. I wasn't at the meeting, but that was one of the issues that was brought up, is how do you measure success of this? So I'm glad that was included in the proposal too. Any other questions?
So they're not doing any of the north-south streets, they're only doing, I guess, they're only doing east-west streets?
Yeah.
So you're gonna pick up those, a few houses out of between each block, too?
Yeah, yeah. We call it the ups and downs.
Okay.
You know, so the Town will go down and do the ups and downs, and the village, pretty much, they're not gonna have to stop at the village line, say Glen Avenue, they're gonna continue down to the end.
So it's meant to just keep going down the four streets?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then the upper area that we would take over, Grove Land, Horseman Drive and Banker area, we turn around at both ends, so for us to just continue when they're finished that.
So we're not gonna make the village, they're gonna have to go up there at all?
They're not gonna have to, they're not gonna have to go over the bridge.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just care that it sounded like they were doing this way and not that way.
I talked to Andrew while they were working it out, and yeah.
Makes sense now, the way he explained it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, it did seem like a simple idea, but the details are all something you have to figure out, so.
I think we're both surprised that the mileage, the whole area in the Town below Mohawk Avenue is almost doubled the mileage of Grove Land, and I never would have thought even just looking at it that it would be. So, you know, that was sort of where we started, and then you start to look at the mileage, and it just doesn't work out, so. But, I mean, these guys would attest just like us, if my, if either of our guys could just start picking up leaves and just keep going, that's when you get your best results, because they just, they just wanna keep going. And at that point, they're just saying, how many loads can we get in a day?
If there's no other questions, Kevin and I are gonna take the lead on it, and I will move that the board endorse the leaf pickup arrangement presented by the Vision Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, I wanna thank, I've already made the committee members, so thank you guys very much for coming, and Tom and Mike, thank you for coming tonight. You can stay for the whole meeting if you want, but.
I would walk to him.
Typically, we take a short recess to let anybody who wants to get out of here do, so we'll take a very short recess, and then we can be in.
Thank you.
See you later. Move that we extend the appointments of the three village representatives to the Vision Committee until December 31st.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Item number three, privilege of the floors. Anyone here who wishes to be heard at privilege of the floor? Go up to the podium, and we know your name, just give your address, and Jim will speak into the microphone so it gets onto the tape, that would be good.
Hi, I'm Jim Halt. I live at 1008 Pleasantview Avenue, I own property at 106 South Pembroke. I'm here for one reason, but before I go there, I'm remiss of saying something for the last three years, and that is, our highway department in the last three years has impressed me so much, and I want everybody to know. I've worked for the village for almost 25 years, I've been through a lot of administrations, a lot of department heads, and Andrew and his workers, and Jim Marks down the park, in the last five years have just done a remarkable job in this village, between the paving of the streets, the maintenance being done, the leaf pickup, more importantly, the snowplowing. I've been through a lot of, 25, 30 years of snowplowing this village that didn't happen under past administrations, so I should've come years ago to tell you that, I'm here to tell you, but we have some great highway workers right now in the village, a lot of young guys, a lot of go-getters, and I just see them working their butts off, so Andrew and Jim Marks, great job. I'm here to clear up something that somebody whispered in my ear that I want to address. Two months ago, I filed a formal complaint about Glenn's Automotive on Bligh Road. As of today, I've been informed that nothing's been done about it. A little birdie whispered in my ear and said, "Don't worry about it, it's Jim being Jim." It's not Jim being Jim, it's Jim concerned about the condition of the Village of Scotia in the last five to 10 years going downhill. I don't know if any of you know, the mayor probably does, we have a crossing guard at the railroad tracks on Bligh Road. Why? I believe 1960 or '69, a little girl got hit by a train and killed there. We immediately, as a village, put a crossing guard there. So how long's that been, 40 years? When you walked the link in school by Glenn's Automotive? You're graciously enough, lucky enough to walk in Bligh Road, because Glenn's Automotive has vehicles parked on the sidewalk 24 hours a day, the sidewalk which doesn't exist. I don't know how you interpret the village code about sidewalk maintenance. Does that mean you have to shovel it? I don't know, I'm not a lawyer to tell you what sidewalk maintenance is. He doesn't have a sidewalk. He has water. I'll take a minute to give you some new pictures. These go with the 10 pictures I gave you two months ago, nothing but done about beautiful, beautiful puddle of water kids would have to walk through, along with all the abandoned cars, but you don't have license plates on them. I want to hear Tom get forgiveness, he's not here.
He'll take it.
I'm just very discouraged with the Village of Scotia ordinances being enforced. I have a business, Adirondack Landscaping, I have a yard on Craigie Avenue. I have two pickup trucks, which are seven years old, which I would guess then imagine seven years is an old pickup truck, with salters on it. Our building department was gracious enough to provide me a citation I had them remove from my property, because they weren't registered. They were not registered. They are taken by a tow truck to Target Distribution Center for the winter, I plow, and then bring them back to my yard. I don't know, two seven-year-old pickup trucks sitting in a yard that aren't registered, and I get a citation. I can show you 40 or 50 abandoned cars right now, and they've not been there for a week, they've been there for years. No citations. I don't know, maybe it's Jim being Jim, but Jim gets citations, and Glenn's Automotive is an asshole. If I lived in that neighborhood, I'd be ballistic. Alls I can say is, not a threat, please, don't take it that way. If a kid gets hit by a car on Bligh Road because the village allowed this, you gotta say to yourself, 1968, we've been paying for a traffic guard at the railroad tracks because a girl got killed. Nobody cares about this. It's not Jim being Jim, it's Jim caring about the Village of Scotia. Please, do something about enforcing the ordinances, they're on the books, I can't tell you anymore than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard at privilege of the floor? Just go to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is Winslow Dalrymple Jr.
Go, do that again.
Winslow Dalrymple Jr. It's D-A-L-R-Y-M-P-L-E. I have a question. Now, I've lived in this town for the last probably 60 years. My kids grew up here, they had a ball down Collins Lake, and we loved it. And I'm shocked, and I don't know, maybe you're working on it, I haven't heard a word, and I've seen nothing in the papers about it, whether the lake is gonna be cleaned or not. If that lake is let go, even for another year, it's gonna be useless, I mean totally useless. There's no reason it can't be cleaned. Saratoga did it, when they had the problem up there, they got the machine in there, they cleaned it from the bottom up, they shipped the stuff out, they used it for fertilizer on the farms, and I see no reason why this Town, Village, can't do the same thing. It's a spring-fed lake, it's not like it's being fed from anywhere else, and once it's clean, as long as the river don't overflow again, it'll stay clean. And I'd like to see some kind of action, at least start, you know, even if it takes a couple of years, at least something, that we know that it's gonna get cleaned again.
Could you, could you state your phone number for the record?
Oh, yeah.
I'd be happy to go over with you, what we've done so far, and what the issues are.
Oh, that'd be great, that'd be great.
It'll take a lot longer than what we have done, but there's an answer to your question, so if you can give me a phone number for the record.
Oh, good, I'll be back.
Call back.
It's a 518-3700895.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else care to be heard at privilege of the floor? Seeing that, I'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on to item number four, which is a resolution to appoint Michael Seguro to position of Labor at Pickham September 17th. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Usually, we let the liaisons onto the department make a motion, but it's okay.
He wasn't paying attention, I believe.
I was, but it's all good. I wasn't acting quick at all, I'm a little slow.
So Mike, welcome to the village, I know we already talked to you, but if anybody wants to know what Mike looks like, there he is, and he's our newest employee.
Thank you.
Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Item number five, a resolution to appoint Victoria Ferenc to the position of part-time clerk. Clerk, this is a position that we had, there's no liaison in courts, so we had created that position in our budget, but then neglected to create the position with civil service, so that was created at their last minute, so now we're free to hire her. She'll be helping out particularly on court nights, but also with what you see that's going on with our audit, she'll be helping with some of these files, that's why I'm so. Anybody care to move to a point of interest?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, the resolution to approve 207(c) status for Dan Harrigan. So Dan was on duty, was injured while on duty, separated his shoulder, he was out for the period of July 6th to August 16th, so by state law, he's afforded 207(c) benefits. Keeping with our policy, I contacted our labor attorney, he reviewed all of the files, agreed that he was due those benefits, and I have a letter here that affords him those for only the separated shoulder, which is what the injury was, but according to our policy, the board has to approve those. So I'm gonna take a motion to approve 207(c) for Dan Harrigan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number six, the approval of volunteer firefighter Jason Garnier, Bill Reiner, Joe Cook, Lucas, and Jacob Yager. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight is authorize me to execute a contract with Louie and Hozie for our annual audit. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine is a resolution to increase A 3410 4755 by $500, offset by a decrease to the A fund balance, this was the $500 from last year's budget, that was rolled back to the A fund that by statute is required to be spent on training in the fire departments, or putting it back into the fire department's training budget. Make a motion.
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10 is a resolution to issue a vendor permit for the Flint House Fall Festival, so just as, so you remember, and I don't have to say it in my comments, so the Flint House is having their fall festival on September 23rd. There will be Wolf Hollow Brewing Company is gonna do a tasting, we have a painter who's gonna be painting, but also selling some of her paintings. Our historian will be making a broom corn, and typically, we just do a permit for the event, so we'll be to the different people, and have to get a separate permit. So anybody care to issue the vending permit for the?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, I'm not sure if this requires an action of the board or not, but because of this event, and it was the first time last year, but it was unique, with the Wolf Hollow tasting, that means that there will be alcohol served on village property, the Flint House is not part of the land, it's village property, so we have a village property alcohol permit that was filled out by Beverly Carter and historian, and it says that once the application approved, the permit will be issued by the village, but it doesn't say who approves the application, so I'm assuming it's this board. Would anybody here approve the application for Beverly Carter and her?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any discussion?
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Item number 11, a resolution to authorize the closure of Fifth Street from Bligh Road to Houston on Saturday, September 22nd, from 12 to 6, for the Village Tavern's annual block party.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, is a resolution to authorize the closure of South Pembroke from O'Hawke Avenue to the driveway of the Mohawk Peckham on Sunday, October 7th, from 12 to 8 for the mayor's farewell party.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, come on. Any discussion? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, is a resolution to authorize the closure, oops, I didn't want to, item 13, resolution to authorize the Scotia Fire Department to surplus their amputus of explication equipment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14, resolution to authorize the police department to surplus their 2012 Charger and 2013 Charger. Make a motion.
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 15 is my comments. I think you've all seen, and we discussed the teal-colored ribbons, colored ribbons along the avenue, so I did contact the board, like we talked about, or the bid, did make sure that they were okay with it, and they were. I think it looks nice, so I sent a mass email out saying that it's over there in cancer month and what was going on there, but.
Of course, very too staged, you tell.
Yeah, a couple minutes of valleys have done it, so we had the request, and like I said in our conversation, it seemed like a good idea, but you want to make sure, since the bid is basically responsible for decoration of the downtown, that they were on board, and they were. Loretta's here, I met with the Special Events Committee regarding a couple of things, so Holiday on the Avenue is coming up December 2nd, but we all also talked about the concept that we talked about, making it a more official committee of the village, and appointing the chair, probably the chair, secretary, and treasurer. I don't think that it makes sense to have that happen until next December 1st, when we have an organizational meeting, but I think it does make sense for us to put together, like, what the whole thing would look like. So I attended the Special Events Committee and floated that to the entire committee, it seemed like they were receptive to the idea as well. And as part of that, we also talked about having each of the three events, the parade, Holiday on the Avenue, and the car show, sponsored by a service club. So right now, it's working really well with Car Show, they get some revenue, the Alex Club does, and they provide the volunteer manpower. The Rotary has always helped with the parade anyway, so I talked to some people from Rotary about whether they'd be interested, and then maybe the Lions would be willing to do Holiday on the Avenue. The nice thing about that is you have a built-in source of volunteers, which is the hardest thing with our Special Events Committee, is to get people to come out and help run it, so we'll be fleshing that out in the next two months. Reminder that the regatta, the rolling regatta, is October 7th. Another reminder that we'll be having our Complete Streets Workshop, October 15th, from 10 to 2:30, all those main board members as can, will attend, all the department heads will be there, planning board has been invited, zoning board will be invited, bid has been invited, so all the principles, and hopefully that workshop will get us to the point where we can adopt a true Complete Streets policy and put us in line for some more great planning. I want to remind the board that our work session on October 2nd will feature a presentation by Smart Walk to give us an update on where we are with our LED lighting project, converting all the lights in the village over to LED lights. And we also will have discussion on the bonding project that we've been talking about, it's time to get that underway to do our bonding. So those will be the big topics for our work session the first Tuesday of October. Talked with Eric Busker, who's been the spearhead for the EV chargers, he's hoping that we'll be ready to install those by the end of October. Got a note from Andrew, the docks are gonna be removed October 15th this year, is that still?
Yeah.
Around there?
That's a good, that's good for now.
Okay, so if anybody asks you, they're coming out, they're coming out the 15th of August.
Karen Bray, still so busy about Sharon?
What's that?
Karen Bray, still so huge, is that it?
So Teresa, our clerk, went online, I think, you can actually go and find these people, they have a Facebook page or something, and it tells about all their travels and why they're here and all that, so it's pretty interesting, but it's a huge vote.
Huge.
And last thing is, Oktoberfest is the 29th, so I'll be sending an email to all the board members, asking them to sign up for shifts, the man, the booth, we're gonna be sharing with the bid again, so it should at least be a little bit lively, so. And those are my comments. Do you correspond to liaison special committee reports, Trusty Mathis?
Well, you heard the great presentation from the Visionary Committee, I'd just like to thank them again, because they did go through a great, challenging journey for 12 months, and to have them come up with what they did with the help from the DPW and Tom Capone, his group up in the Town, was excellent. So I'm excited about seeing that come to fruition, and hopefully, you know, now that we get to keep them on board, they can too as well, so it's good, could be good.
Trusty Cabero?
We had a bid meeting on Tuesday morning. The bid's doing good, they got a couple of projects they're gonna start working on. For Christmas time, there're gonna be a little more festive decorations on the coals this year, so I look forward to seeing those come up before Holiday on the Avenue.
Did you already report on the Facilities Committee as well?
Sure. Facilities Committee is doing really well, we had all of our reports about all the department heads, and they asked a few questions, and we actually ended up touring a modern fire station. They went to the Pukindal Fire Department, they gave us a great tour of what inadequate space would be for what they need to do, and now we're going to tour some modern town hall, police, and courts at our next meeting, so they're extremely enthusiastic and looking forward to seeing what they come up with.
Thanks. Trusty, how's it?
We had our final show at Freedom Park, and this year's response was very well-taken, a lot of people showed up, some of the weather was a little bad, we had to cancel one performance. The attendance to the period we had was fairly good, better, a little bit better than it was last year, so we're very pleased, we're gonna wrap up the meeting sometime within the next three weeks or so.
Great. Thank you. Item 17, departmental reports, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody care to move to accept them?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 18 is auditor planes.
Make a motion, pass, and those?
I'll second. Any discussion? Can we all just call a roll on this one?
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Cabero?
Trustee Tavero.
Yes. Yes. Item 19, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board trustees for July 11th. Make a motion?
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 20 is approval of the minutes of the July 31st special meeting of the board trustees. Make a motion?
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 21 is the minutes from the August 8th regular meeting of the trustees. Make a motion?
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 22 is approval of the minutes of the August 13th special meeting of the board trustees. Make a motion?
I'll second.
I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 23, new business, any new business for, so somehow, don't even ask me how, since we talked about it and I told you it would be on there, the acceptance of the SAFER Grant was not put on the agenda. So it was your fault, I should have looked at it. So at this point, I would look for a motion to accept the SAFER Grant?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that? I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys get to work. And then my final piece of new business is, we had a little miscommunication with a resident. Dr. Elizabeth Dieter is a member of our community who turned 101 years old on September 2nd. We had intended to recognize her for that, but there was a miscommunication from the family. They said September. We didn't realize it would be before our meeting. So I did get some good information on her and I'm telling you right now, there's way more amazing things about her that are in this proclamation. She, she became a doctor in the 1940s. She flew Piper airplanes. She just had an amazing life. So it was more than you could ever flit into a proclamation, but the fact that she is now 101 is also amazing to me. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'm going to ask Trustee Tavero to deliver it, since you actually know him. So it's a proclamation to honor Dr. Elizabeth Dieter. Whereas Dr. Elizabeth Dieter is a Scotia Glenville High School graduate who through education, service, and profession is a pioneer in her field. And whereas Dr. Elizabeth Dieter obtained her Doctor of Medicine from Albany Medical College in 1946 and her internal medicine certificate from the University of Pennsylvania Medical College in 1954. And whereas Dr. Elizabeth Dieter actively practiced her professions through positions at Skimmore College, General Electric Industrial Clinic, the Women's College at Duke University, and Wellesley College. And whereas Dr. Elizabeth Dieter celebrates her 101st birthday, September 2nd, 2018, now therefore be resolved, and in honor of this momentous occasion, the mayor of the Village of Scotia does hereby proclaim, Sunday, September 2nd, 2018, to be Dr. Elizabeth Dieter Day in the Village of Scotia. So congratulations to her and I'll pass that on to you. Anything else for the? Oh, yep. So we did receive, we did receive a resolution, and I talked to you guys before the meeting